Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the February 25th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Present.
Councilmember Delarada.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Here. Would everyone please rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of this land, to the citizens of our nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, and to the great and just well.
So I will mention, at the last meeting, I had a great suggestion from a resident and avid town volunteer to have someone lead the pledge, and I was going to pick somebody out, and then I thought that was sort of mean. So the next time, I will ask beforehand and have somebody lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll get started, and we wish to represent and acknowledge that Niskuna is on the traditional lands of the Kaniki Haka and the Mahi Konok peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have stewarded this land through generations. We have a lot on our agenda today, so we're going to start with two resolutions. One of them is a ceremonial resolution. If you flip to the third page, it's 2025-76, and it's sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. We are going to recognize Jeffrey Relation. I'm very excited for this. And we'll have the clerk call the resolution. And Chief, do we normally take pictures right after? How does that? Okay.
A resolution recognizing Jeffrey Relations for his many years of service to the town in Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Well, I mentioned this last time when we had to sadly accept your retirement, but we are very lucky to have had you in the community for as long as we did. We probably would have kept you here for as long as you were alive, but we're happy that you're retiring, and we wish you the best in all that you do, and we're very grateful for your service.
I can add to that and say that I had the privilege of seeing Sergeant Relation in action, working with children in our community, sometimes the most vulnerable children that we have in our community, teaching them how to look both ways before they cross the street, modeling it for them, practicing it with them. One time, he forgot to look both ways, and they called him on it, and he redid it like a champ, teaching them bicycle safety, letting them see how he can help them, and connecting with them, and just being a just positive face and a safe person for them. So I, again, found it hard to accept his retirement, but very excited that we're here tonight to celebrate him.
Yes. All right, so what I'd like to do, we had a couple signatures that we wanted to grab on the ceremonial resolution, so I will be delivering that to your home for tomorrow, but I'd love to grab a picture if that would be okay, just for a few minutes, and then we'll move on to our... Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll call the... Please call the roll.
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Bye-byes.
And the resolution passes. Do you want to? Do you want to? Who usually don't see me? I would love that.
There's a mic down there.
Be it enacted by the Town Board of the Town of Niskuna as follows: Whereas on January 26, 2000, Jeffrey Relation began his career with the Town of Niskuna Police Department, where he dedicated his service for 25 years until his retirement in January of this year; and whereas Jeffrey Relation was promoted from patrol officer to sergeant on December 27, 2021, during which time he shared his knowledge and skillset with less senior officers and served in the supervisory role until his retirement; and whereas the current Traffic and Community Engagement Division of the Niskuna Police Department was established in September of 2023, and Sergeant Relation oversaw the division for the remainder of his tenure within Niskuna Police Department; and whereas Sergeant Relation oversaw and helped build and grow the following programs in the town's police department: Coffee with the Cop, Cop and Kids Reading Program, and the Bus Patrol Program; and whereas Sergeant Relation was born and raised in Niskuna and devoted his career to giving back to his community; and whereas Sergeant Relation has served a vital role in the Town of Niskuna Police Department; and whereas throughout his years of dedicated service to the town, Sergeant Relation has maintained a standard of excellence in his work and has been an invaluable asset as an employee, coworker, and friend. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Niskuna Town Board would like to thank Sergeant Jeffrey Relation for 25 years of dedicated service and commitment to the Town of Niskuna and wish him many years of happiness during his retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you all for coming. I feel very old with all that said. I really appreciate everyone coming up and coming out, and thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, we're going to keep the happiness going here. We're actually going to jump back up to Resolution 2025-55. This is a resolution appointing a police officer. Again, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a police officer in the Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just say we're excited to have Evan here tonight and his beautiful family, and welcome to Niskuna Police Department, and we look forward to all that you're going to support us with, so.
Yeah, we're all really excited. I was lucky enough to be in the interview when you were here with the rest of the department interviewing, and I feel very fortunate that you happened to move in on a street where somebody told you about potential opening, and we were lucky enough to have you come in. So I think it all worked out for the best, and we hope you're here for a really long time. So we'll go through with the vote, and then we'll do the swearing in.
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Adorable child, in a way.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Bye-byes.
Resolution passes. All right, please repeat after me. I, Evan M. Pettis, do solemnly swear...
Aye, Evan M. Pettis, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. That was such a great way to start the meeting. That's fantastic. Okay, we're going to move on. We actually have two public hearings tonight. During this public hearing time, we'll ask that the public comments that we're listening to only pertain to the topic of the public hearing. The first one will be a public hearing regarding the changes to the town's peddling and soliciting code. Do we have anyone that's here to talk with us about that? Not exactly a hot topic, huh? That's okay. So we will close the public hearing and move on to the second public hearing regarding the prohibition of on-street parking on a portion of Anandaga Road. Anyone here to talk through that?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joseph Jaikle, 914 Vromene Ave. Yeah, the prohibition on parking here, I think this is a good step. I live three blocks down the street. I live on Vromene Ave, which is right on the corner of Route 7. I'm going to talk on this issue a little bit more tonight during Privilege of the Floor, but you're all aware that we had another fatality on my street, at the end of my street, once again on Route 7. Onandaga is three blocks down. Prohibiting parking along that side of the road is going to help people on Onandaga that are pulling up to Route 7, but that's not the real issue. The real issue with Route 7 is that it is a speed trap. It's a speed trap because people fly up and down that road all day long in both directions. They use the turning lanes to speed past other cars. I can't tell you how many times I have been passed on Route 7 in the turning lane by people doing 60-plus miles per hour. So this is a good step to do, and I think you've turned this around pretty quickly from when this has been talked about, but the whole issue with Route 7 has been dragging on for years. I've said in the past that you need to do something with the task force on Route 7, involve the Schenectady EPD, involve the county sheriffs, and involve Latham. So stopping people from parking on Onandaga is good for those people pulling out there, but the bigger problem is Route 7 itself and what's going on there. So good step in the right direction on this, but this is not going to solve the problem in Niskuna, and it really needs to get addressed. So I think this is a good idea, and I hope that you vote to prohibit the parking on that side street with the idea that it's going to help a very small number of people using that street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaikle. Anyone else?
Yes, Jeremy Berry, 2336 Keogah Road. In regards to the no parking anytime signs, I support the town adding these signs from Troy's Road to the driveway on 1021 Anandaga Road. As a resident of Niskuna and residing at McKernan address for over 24 years, I've spoken to many of my neighbors and their concerns over this timeframe about the unsafe conditions with the intersection of Route 7 and Anandaga. In a perfect world, many of these neighbors would suggest the following: Number one, close off the entrance and exit from Harry's gas station on Anandaga Road; and two, have the ability to prevent parking in the no parking zone at the service station adjacent to the gas pumps parallel to Route 7. The second item significantly impacts the sightline looking east up Route 7, but I don't believe the town has the ability to enforce this. Overall, I see the town taking steps to do what they can to minimize preventable actions being a good thing. I commend those individuals who have discussed this in various committees over the past few months, and I appreciate the effort made on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle Pirro, 1017 Anandaga Road. I'm in support of this resolution. As a resident on Anandaga Road, we have significant issues pulling onto and off of Route 7, particularly if you're traveling west and then turning onto Anandaga Road. That's where the majority of the parking has occurred, which creates a bottleneck back onto Route 7 and then reduces your ability to see oncoming traffic on Anandaga Road as well. In addition, the conditions on Route 7, which have already been mentioned tonight, are extremely dangerous, and this is a small measure to reduce some of the danger that residents, and particularly those who live in our neighborhood, face on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I'm Karen Berry. I reside at 2336 Keogah Road. I like the opportunity to communicate my concerns about the dangerous intersection, the corner of Anandaga Road and Troy's Schenectady Road. As most of us are aware, this service station has been in business since the 1970s, but has gone through numerous ownership changes throughout the years. Harry Kingra has owned the gas station for many years, and things became contentious when he submitted a plan to the town to expand the operation sometime around 2018. The town recommended that the residents try to resolve our concerns at a meeting, which was scheduled on December 5, 2018, at the town library. There was a lot of emotion shared, many opinions were expressed, and one of those concerns most vocalized was the safety of the motorists as well as cyclists and pedestrians. Harry promised the following: That he would paint no parking on the asphalt along Route 7, so no one would park blocking the view of drivers turning onto Troy Road or off from Troy Road onto Anandaga. He said he would also ask those who parked there to move their vehicles. Harry did follow through with the no parking signage in the next few days, but within a week, he began parking vehicles there. Unfortunately, Harry also parked his numerous personal vehicles there, and furthermore, this continued for several years. Concerned neighbors continued to communicate with Harry, but nothing changed. As Harry's business grew, he parked more and more vehicles, and he eventually double-parked vehicles, exacerbating the problem. Since then, besides talking to Harry, other concerned neighbors and I have reached out to the town on numerous occasions to request for help. We've called the town on many occasions, we've sent emails, we've wrote letters to the former supervisor, as well as attended traffic safety meetings. Unfortunately, as the service station is located on a state highway, it is my understanding that the jurisdiction of sightline is outside the scope of the town's control. Over time, I found myself avoiding this intersection and used access points, other access points in our neighborhood. My neighbors often did the same, but over the years, we all inevitably had at least a few examples of near misses at this corner. I'd like to quickly tell you about one of mine. One of my near misses involved a vehicle heading west at the gas station. Onto Anandaga, identified as vehicle 1. As you can see, I was turning north onto Anandaga Road toward my home as the vehicle was exiting the station on vehicle number 2. The parked vehicle along the perimeter of the property prevented the drivers from seeing my extended bed pickup truck. I don't drive a small vehicle. It's an extended bed, four-door. But when they look over their left-hand shoulder, you have parked vehicles there, and they cannot see anyone coming from Route 7. As I was turning into the neighborhood, Harry was driving south on Anandaga in his blue pickup truck, waiting to turn left into the station. That's vehicle number 3. Unfortunately, there were vehicles parked on the east side of the vehicle, vehicle number 4, next to the station, which left me nowhere to go. Fortunately, I was traveling at a modest rate of speed as I was turning in to enter our neighborhood. So as I blew my horn, vehicle number 2 was able to come to a complete stop before hitting my passenger side of my pickup truck. At that juncture, Harry and I looked at each other, and I threw up my hands in desperation and just gave a sigh, because I don't know what to do at this point. We've been battling this for five years. He's been aware of it. He observed it, and I'm like, we've asked you not to park here. I don't know what else to do. I, like other of my neighbors, don't care who parks on residential streets. What differentiates my argument against vehicles parked on this corner side of the road at Harry's station is its close proximity to Route 7, and because it's a high-traffic area with vehicles entering and exiting the station, I think that it's a major concern and very dangerous. I think this story is pertinent, because no parking anytime signage won't guarantee an accident won't happen, but it should help to prevent the situation for others in the future. I decided to come here tonight to speak because some of my neighbors were unable to attend tonight's meeting, and I wanted to express to some of you my concerns. All I ask is that you vote to implement parking restrictions next to Harry's gas station to help avoid potential accidents or worse. Lastly, I'm just going to say, I don't like to speak publicly. I don't feel comfortable doing it, but I will get up to speak for what I think is right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Doug Lonas, and I moved into this town in 1989, and I bought a house on the corner of 2314 Keogah Road. So I am both Keogah and Anandaga. And unlike Karen, I do love to speak in public, but I'm going to make it short. I think this is wonderful that you're taking this action. It's too bad that it had happened on the same day as that accident. I've many times have walked from my house and walked up past the accident sites, and I know that's something you're dealing with, and hopefully there'll be a resolution. But as far as the no parking, I've had probably two very close calls coming off from Route 7 onto Anandaga without almost hitting vehicles. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I thank you for your time, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marina Pirro, living at 1017 Anandaga Road. I'm just going to echo what all my neighbors have said, my husband said earlier, but I think it's really important. I support the no parking sign. We've only lived there for three years, and there's been plenty of near misses and certainly lots of accidents, which, again, we know what you're dealing with, the issues on Route 7, but I think that will, this no parking sign will at least eliminate some of the dangers at those intersections going into all the neighborhoods, and hopefully set a good precedent for other neighborhoods also dealing with this traffic issue coming from Route 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak regarding Anandaga Road? Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We're going to close the public hearing then for the prohibition of on-street parking for the portion of Anandaga Road, and we will move on to Privilege of the Floor, general Privilege of the Floor. We ask that per our policy that we keep things to three minutes. We also ask that you try to keep things as informative and less nasty as things have gotten in the past. So I appreciate your attention to that. We'll open Privilege of the Floor. I believe we have at least one person signed up. Natalie.
Good evening. Natalie Tiberio. I reside at 8 Seneca Road. I've lived in Niskuna for about 45 years. It's a very nice community, and there are a lot of good things about it. That's how I'd like to start off. I do feel it's my responsibility as a resident to express my concerns when I see them. So I'm going to continue. Our country is divided, and unfortunately, so is our community. The only things that seem to unite us is geography and the laws that govern us. The foundation of our law and order is derived from the Constitution of the United States of America. Today, we stand before a body of community members who have chosen to represent the people. These individuals have sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution and act in the best interests of the taxpayers. I've personally witnessed part of the process involved in adding language about hosted and non-hosted rentals in our town. The process was unusual, because the board did not fully adopt these suggestions made by the planning committee. There was even a descending vote from one board member who voiced her personal opinions on the matter. I was surprised by her candor, but I was even more taken aback later when I learned that she owns the rental property in Niskuna, as reported in the Times Union. This revelation prompted me to research the legal aspects of such an issue by a board member. Irregardless of it being a long-term or short-term rental, after researching, I discovered several concerning legal issues. First, a clear conflict of interest. Second, a lack of transparency and disclosure to the public. Third, failure to recuse herself from the vote. And lastly, broader ethical and legal implications. The trust that should guide the process has been tarnished, and I believe it should not be decided or altered in the future by this current board. There are other issues. Mr. Moskowitz, you're a real estate agent. Mr. Delarada, your father, I'm not sure if you own properties in Niskuna. Bill, you have investments. I know out of town, not sure about Niskuna, but you need to follow your oath. Okay? So now this... Unfortunately, this is just not an individual incident. There have been multiple instances where the board members have violated their oaths. I've seen evidence, and this is not a matter of partisan politics. It's about upholding the sacred oath you took to serve in the best interests of the constituents and the taxpayers. It's disappointing to have seen these actions and also seen the evidence. We all eventually reap what we sow. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's the end of our list of signups, correct? All right, so it's open to anyone who would like Privilege of the Floor?
Hi, my name is Mike Clutt. I'm going to say my address, because I don't care anymore. 3554 Consol Road. I'm tired of getting threatened. Next time, somebody's going to get hurt. About seven months ago, I came into this town and said that something needs to be done about the speeding in Niskuna. Two months went by, came every meeting, and said the same thing. Five months ago, I came in being that nothing was done about the speeding in the town itself. I said about things on Consol Road. Went back and forth. Now, I am asking again, please do something about the excessive speed on Consol Road between 3450 Consol Road and Buckingham and Consol Road. This is our sixth request. Please respond in writing to Mike, Diana Clutt, 3554 Consol Roads, Schenectady, New York, 12304. Now, last week after your campaign speech, you said communications, communications, communications. That's something that is lacking. For nine months, I've communicated. For six months, I've requested in writing, and none of them have been answered. How long do I have to wait before you people will understand that there's a speeding problem in Niskuna, especially on my road? It's been proven. I have a report here from your police chief that told me that there is. But you don't want to do anything. You have Albany, Schenectady, Colony, Rotterdam. All the surrounding areas have either said drop their speed limit down to 25 or said they're going to enforce the local speed limit laws, rules, and regulations. What is wrong with you people? Isn't tonight a wake-up call to you people up there? There is a speeding problem in Niskuna. Doesn't have to be on my street. I'm asking that the town people either come up, come into these meetings, or go to their local... Well, you guys, but you guys don't do nothing. What are we supposed to do? I'm communicating. You're not communicating back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clutt.
I'm Kyle Pirro, again, 1017 Anandaga Road. I'd just like to offer some words of support for Resolution 2025-61. I'd just like to offer some words of support for Resolution 202561, which would create a Shafers Homes Committee. I think we have a unique opportunity here to recognize Paul Shaffer. I know this room is actually recognized in his name, but Paul was one of the first conservationists and really instrumental in the creation of the Adirondack Park. But here in Niskuna, we also have something special related to that, which is his homes. Paul was sort of at the forefront of reusing materials, has a distinct style, and it really is something that's unique to our community. It would be great if we could get this groups together and start cataloging and really having an excellent database, not only for homeowners, but the town in general. It's a unique part of our history and I'm in support of it. And thank you for appointing me to that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clutt, I'm sorry, we're going to go through the group to, oh, okay. We're going to pass this down to the clerk. Anyone else that would like to speak privilege of the floor?
David Darpino, 2260 Grand Boulevard, also chairman of the Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Used to sitting in those seats, not here. Also talking about Resolution 202561 on the Paul Shaffer Committee. I'm really, really excited about this. I think it's really long overdue. I know that some of the members are here in the crowd that I've talked to about establishing this committee. One of the things that this will do is it will create a database, which is a missing link of all the Paul Shaffer work that he's done in this town. The Kelly Adirondack Center has a great treasure of commercial works that he did all throughout the state, but there's so much that's missing on the residential end. And I think that this committee with select members of people that live in the homes and other people that have historical backgrounds are going to fill that void. So I'm very excited about this. These people have been working on it separately for years, and I think collectively, we can really, really establish something that's a great cultural asset to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fair Lawn Parkway, Niskuna. Since you have said that the water and sewer department had an unsustainable deficit, you had to raise taxes and fees and close the transfer station. I am revisiting an issue I brought up before. It involves four employees who were hired between 1997 and 2000 and who were placed on the wrong retirement plan, according to them. Not, okay, there was a one-year window to fire, to file. The state then put them on the regular retirement fund plan. They sued the state and town and they went to court in the New York State Supreme Court and then the appellate court, and they lost in both courts under what the decision was. They had not exhausted the administrative process in a timely fashion. Neither Landry or Sayad would use the taxpayers' money to pay back the retirement system. Fast forward to 2022, the former supervisor, with the support of Jason Moskowitz, took up the cause and did take $750,000 out of the fund balance to pay back the retirement system. The New York State Comptroller's Office litigated the case on behalf of the state. Even at that time, I remember Bill McPartlin told me this was wrong and it shouldn't happen, and then he voted yes. Let's face it, if they had valid reasons, they would have won in court. I don't have a problem with them being put on the retirement system they wanted, but somebody should have paid for it and it shouldn't have been the taxpayers, especially since they lost in two court cases. How could the board justify enormous spending of taxpayers' money, especially in light of your need to raise taxes, having unsustainable deficits? Jason, if you had put as much effort into the utility fee fiasco affecting hundreds of residents and not just four individuals, the fiasco might have been resolved. Rather than proposing the spending of, rather, you propose spending the additional $30,000 to attempt fixing this fiasco. Now I see you have a resolution now to hire a deputy superintendent for water and sewer. Is this a new position? I can only say that actions do speak louder than words. Words you can deny, but you can't deny your actions. You can't say you care about taxpayers. You can't say that you're placing us first, then spending money, such as happened with the four employees. And again, I do not have a problem with anyone getting on the right system. I have a problem using taxpayers' money. That I have a major problem. I also have a problem that the former supervisor sent a letter, which I had foiled, stating that they were not at fault to the state in order for them to be able to do this. How can you say someone's not at fault if two courts say they are? Again, actions speak louder than words. Words can be denied, but believe me, your actions can't be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening again, Joseph Jaikle, 914 Roman. You know, when I spoke a couple of minutes ago during the public hearing, you know, I'm upset. I'm upset about what just happened again today on the end of my street. It was only, almost exactly one year ago to the day that A.J. Smolam was killed at the end of my street, that 14-year-old boy, literally five doors from my house. This is the second time in one year and three days that this has happened. You guys know that there's a major problem on Route 7 in addition to other areas of the town. I know it's a state road, but for Christ's sakes, folks, we need to do a full court press here. You don't want to see accidents happening on Route 7 or anywhere else in town. I know you don't. But talk is cheap and talk and talk and talk is getting you nowhere. You've got to do something and it's got to be solid and it's got to be hard and it's got to be now. I think a task force is the way to go. Pull all the stops. Every one of you town board members could be on the horn with local law enforcement, with your assembly members, senators, cross the aisle. It doesn't matter if they're Republican or Democrat. I'm an independent. I don't carry any party on my shoulder. Make the calls, get it done. Call DOT, yell at anybody that's going to do it because this is a problem that's literally killing people year after year in our town. So that's all I want to say. I'm heartbroken for the families involved. It's a terrible thing and I'm tired of seeing the police lights around my neighborhood. The second thing I want to talk about is long-term budget planning. Back when the 2025 budget was being proposed, there were some long-term plans through 2024 to 2028. There's a presentation on the town website. I reviewed that very thoroughly. I contacted one of the staff in the town because I found a $312,000 error in the 2027 long-term budget considerations. And I emailed this town member and sure enough, they emailed me back in early December that you're right, Joe, we have made a mistake. It's $312,000. So I checked this, this document today, again, on the town website because after two and a half months, I would expect that a large amount of money like that, even though it hasn't been spent yet, it's a protection, would be updated, but it's not. I find this really troubling for things like that for a number of reasons. Number one, this was presented to the public and the numbers are wrong. Number two, nobody in the town caught the problem. I found the problem and I brought it to the town's attention. Not to try and take shots at anybody. It's a legitimate problem and it's a lot of money. But two and a half months later, it hasn't been updated, it hasn't been adjusted. I don't even know if you were informed about it, but to me, a $300,000 problem is a big problem for the town. So I can't understand why things like that just seem to get passed off. I kind of echoing what I just heard from one of the other residents. If I'm communicating to you, I'm not communicating to you because I'm trying to take shots at you. I'm actually trying to do something that may be positive for the town or maybe make somebody's job a little bit easier, but that's not the right kind of feedback. And I know my time is just about up. So just one final thing. There are a lot of things that I love about Niskuna. I've been here for more than 20 years, but there's a lot of things that need improvement and they need to be fixed. And one of them is just a common courtesy. If I email the town or I call somebody, I get this hit or miss response out of members. Even just to acknowledge somebody if they send an email, I can understand that you're all busy and if it takes you a day to get back to me just saying, hey, I got your email, we're looking into it. But when I have to send Michelle an email and say, I'm foiling this information because I sent an email to so-and-so and they don't even give me the courtesy of a response, or I send an email to somebody on staff and it takes two weeks for them to answer me, a lot of this information that I'm asking for really doesn't have to be foiled. People know their jobs. So why bust my chops or anybody else's by not giving them information that they're looking for in a timely manner? I know that's not how you want to run the shop around here. You're sitting, you're sitting in the chair and all of you are also, and you're department heads and you have competent staff. If they're not following a simple protocol to get back to people in a timely manner, just to say, hey, I got your note or I got your phone call, I'm working on it, that's great. That makes me feel much better, but not hearing for a week to 10 days is, it's a no-go for me. That's a non-answer and I don't appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaikle. Would anybody else like to speak?
William Chapman, 1465 Clifton Park Road. I'm also chair of the town's Complete Streets Committee. I did want to just offer a quick thought. The town has taken steps to look at the speeding and the fatalities and the accidents on Route 7. Actually began with a former town supervisor, our county district attorney, Bob Carney, our chief of police, Chief Cooken, who have seen the accidents that have happened and have asked the state DOT that they need to step forward to do some things. The town has moved forward with getting a $139,000 traffic linkage study with funds from CDTA through federal. And there will be, an engineering firm has been retained to look at policy things, infrastructure things that can be done to help with traffic calming and speed control on Route 7, to look at some infrastructure that can make the road safer, policy kinds of things, safer pedestrian crosswalks, looking at the pedestrian and bike access. And a big part of that will be asking residents, they'll be surveying residents on Route 7 in the community to get their input, to really learn what they see being on the road, like the folks on Anadaga that have spoken this evening. And I'm even hopeful that the situation on Anadaga and other streets, if we do some things with better traffic management, speed control, traffic calming on Route 7, that some of the intersections will be better. Also, you know, looking at an improved bus stop, even pedestrian crosswalk from Hickory to get over to Bellevue Hospital. And I think that citizens will have an opportunity to give their input, the folks that are on the road and professionals. And I'm also hopeful that if we have a carefully done study, that that's a first step to DOT saying, we need to spend some money on this road. DOT has been involved in this study, so they'll be more likely to search for those federal funds or use state funds to take the steps that need to be taken to improve safety on Route 7. So I do believe that our county, state, town officials know about this problem, taking some steps to do this and doing it in a professional way going forward. And just as a last footnote, I do want to say that I support the Paul Shaffer Committee. And I think his homes are a historic treasure here in Niskuna. And the more that we can identify those, see the specific features that he had in terms of the brickwork that he used and fireplaces and other kinds of things is part of our historic heritage in this town. And Mr. Shaffer was a real leader in protection of environmental resources with the Adirondack, so we would be recognizing really a local resident who's had an important contribution to the environment and history in the town. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Jeremy Berry again, 2336 Keuga Road. In regards to Resolution 202561, in regards to the Shaffer Homes Committee, as I mentioned above, I've lived at 2336 Keuga Road for 24 years. My home is a Shaffer-built home. It was built in 1960 and I believe it was one of the last ones built in the Iroquois Hills neighborhood. My wife and I have taken great pride in updating our home and have worked with Tom Canizo and Ken Hassett on a number of occasions to ensure we stay within the town code, of course, and whenever we significantly upgraded that residence. As you probably already know, Shaffer Homes are known for their small Spartan kitchens. In 2017, we decided to embark on a kitchen addition that required a variance approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Additionally, since that time, we've added a Cape Cod-style vegetable garden and a 12-by-20 barn in the backyard. The reason why I mention these things is because I believe these additions are all in the spirit of what Paul Shaffer would have envisioned, but most importantly, add to the charm of the Iroquois Hills neighborhood and the town. Our home is just one small piece in a larger fabric we all call Niskuna. We take great pride and as a fifth or sixth owner, I see us as stewards of this beautiful home, built 65 years ago. During this time, we have learned a lot and we're happy to share with our neighbors who have decided to embark on the same journey we did many years ago. I can't believe it's been almost 25 years, but I'm happy to sustain Mr. Shaffer's legacy by becoming a member of the Shaffer Homes Committee. I look forward to working with members of other town committees, my neighbors and other interested parties. I believe doing what we can to maintain the beauty of these homes as well as the uniqueness of Niskuna's neighborhoods is an important responsibility that we all bear. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vincent Daley. I'm at 2231 Webster Drive in Niskuna, New York. I've lived in this town for 62 years. Yeah, 62 years. I came up here, it's easy for people to criticize government, but it's a lot easier to get up and tell them when they were doing a job. And I got to say, thank you, Town Board, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. They're doing a tremendous job on the streets as far as moving ice and snow. I travel up, I get up early in the morning, I'm out of the house by 7:00. I came up here to say thank you all for keeping the streets and the brush pickup. It's phenomenal and you repaved my road last summer. A lot of work goes into that and a lot of money. The road is absolutely beautiful. But I came here tonight to thank you all for what you do. And I know you don't have an easy job, but keep doing what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? All right, with that, we will close privilege of the floor and we will move on to committee reports, starting with police and public safety.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Our Police and Public Safety Committee met on February 11th. Under Operations, we discussed the Schenectady County Stop DWI Contract, which is a $13,250 grant that we get yearly. It's a proactive approach to stop DWI. There's a resolution to accept that grant tonight. Under Fleet and Equipment, we talked about the vehicle maintenance bid. There's a resolution toward that contract tonight to Auto Solutions. We also discussed the purchase of two police vehicles that'll be used for Traffic and Community Engagement Division. Again, that's grant-funded. And the purchase of teaser equipment, entering a five-year contract, again, that's a grant-funded purchase. Under Building, we discussed accreditation modifications to our evidence room and our file room. We're looking at the locks there and getting up to order for accreditation. For training, we had a lot of training again this month. We had Sergeant Party attended the Alert Level 1 Train the Trainer, which is a reality-based active shooter training. We had Officer Hammerding attending. We had Officer Hammerding attending the Breath Analysis Operator for Breathalyzer Tests through Zone 5. We had Sergeant Cathaga and Detective Munger. They're gonna be attending the Oxygen Forensic Training on the 25th. Under Citizen Correspondence, we had ongoing conversation about Baker Ave at Ravine Road. We collected data there and it did show that there are not speeding concerns, so we were glad that we were able to check that out. On Andaga Road and Troy Schenectady Road Parking, we discussed the public hearing that happened today. Wanted to give a personal thanks to Tara Peterson and Paula Keefe, who came to our Police and Public Safety meeting back in November and presented their concerns. And as someone said tonight, we were able to move through that pretty quickly with our town planner and our planning board. For Town Events, we have Coffee with a Cop continuing at the Senior Center, the Third Tuesday Monthly. And for our Cops and Kids Reading Program, there were 12, 14 sessions actually in January at Glencliff and Birchwood is the Host School for February. For Town Clerk, we discussed the peddling and solicitation, no solicitation registry and that we have a, we had the public hearing tonight for that. And under Court and Town Attorney, we talked about that there were five Extreme Risk Protection Order cases, 12 unlicensed dogs, 60 bus patrol hearings with 30 more to be rescheduled, and ongoing parking ticket cases. For School District, we had Rosendale Road School Speed Zone, looking for a resolution to call for a public hearing tentative on that. Detective Munger collected speed data and it did show that a couple times during the day when school comes, goes in and out, that the speed limit does get excessive. So our data did support us to look further into that. Under VA Middle School, there was a requested crosswalk over by Dexter Street and we decided we need more information on the reconfiguration that the school district's doing with their Capitol Project, like where they're gonna put the parent pickups and drop-offs and things like that. So we want to make sure that we're smart about where we put those crosswalks. Under Personnel, we talked about appointing Evan Pettis as we swore him in tonight and we discussed Jeff Relations' retirement. Under Other, we had our event application for road closures. We're looking into other town codes to get ideas on that. And we also talked about Alexander John Smullen Safety Memorial Law. That's AJ's father, Assemblyman Robert Smullen. He's sponsoring a bill that establishes a Traffic Safety Memorial Sign Program to memorialize victims of fetal vehicle collisions. AJ was a member of our Niskiuna community and tragically passed away March 6th at the age of 14. This would be a program with DOT-approved signs where families could memorialize their loved ones and also give a traffic safety reminder to the public. And then after two years, they would retain that sign for their own personal belonging. And it's an initiative to increase public safety and also help hopefully the grieving process for families. And we had a ceremonial resolution in support of this earlier this month, so. For Resolution Tonight, we have seven resolutions. A resolution to accept that Stop DWI Grant, a resolution to award a Vehicle Maintenance Contract, a resolution to purchase two police vehicles, that's grant-funded, teaser equipment grant-funded, resolution to call for a public hearing for, we're not doing that actually, that's tentative maybe for next month for Rosendale Road. Resolution to appoint Police Officer Evan Pettis, which we did already, and we had the ceremonial resolution for Sergeant Relation. And we'll be meeting again March 6th at 3:30.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Brennan. We'll move on to Highway and Community Programs.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Highway Parks Recreation Committee met on February 6th. We start that meeting with our Highway Superintendent Ray Smith. He was absent at the meeting, being out with illness, but we did continue on with the meeting and discuss items regarding the highway and parks. Personnel-wise, we have a hire on for this evening, which will then bring us up to full staffing. It's been many years since that has happened, so we're sort of excited about that. So we'll have the crews and the people we need to maintain our parks and our roads here in town. We discussed bids that went out for Dean Street Park and Baker Avenue Park. Those are parks that we use outside, help to mow and maintain during the summer. Christmas tree pickup is over, that ended February 7th, so hopefully everybody got their tree out. If you didn't, well, compost it in your backyard, I guess, because we're done, we're done picking those up. As you know, the Highway Department has been out a lot this winter, plowing, sanding, and salting. It's been a little bit of a challenging year. Our superintendent's been doing an excellent job and our crews have been doing an excellent job, doing the work they need to do to clear the roads and to help them. We need to make sure we don't park on the roads and keep our vehicles in our driveways and off the roads. And just to give you a little bit about the procedure, so after storms, what the Highway Superintendent will do is he'll have the crews go back out on their route. So they're responsible for a certain route and that's their route and they take ownership of that route and they will go back out, check it, if they need to resalt, replow, resand, they, they do that and do the best they can. I think they've been doing a very good job with a challenging year that we've had. Also, we discussed surplus items. We have a resolution for surplus items. If we get new equipment, what we do is we surplus the equipment that we're getting rid of to get the maximum money we can out of that equipment. We sell that on the open market. Also, at our meeting, we discussed some drainage on different roads in the town. Open discussion-wise, we did discuss, as Councilmember Brennan, about the traffic memorialization signs. Something we hope we never have to do, but it's very unfortunate that we do. I think, you know, people have seen those where people make memorials on the sides of roads where maybe a loved one or someone has been killed in an accident. We don't want to do this, but I think it's a very good thing and hopefully some good things will come out of this by having these signs, which are gonna be DOT-approved signs, they'll be put up next to the roadways where these accidents have occurred. Hopefully that will bring attention to people to slow down, be careful. We've done a lot of work trying to work on Troy Road. We've got a linkage study, we got grant money to do that. We've got a traffic division in our police department that goes out and patrols that road, but we can't be there 24/7. We're doing what we can. And I know people come in and they, every month, and we hear you, we do hear you. We are continuing to work on that, best that we can. Okay, Recreation is the second part of our committee. Seasonal Employment Applications, Positions at the Pool, those are open, so that's on our website. We'll be doing interviews for people in the summer already, we're planning ahead for our summer. Spring Soccer Registration is also open on our website and we are applying for a SIP Grant. This grant is probably one of the best-kept secrets. It's a grant that we get through the county for our concert series at Town Hall here in the summer. So if you've never been to any of our Thursday night or Wednesday night concerts, sometimes they're different days, but great events. We have live music for an hour. Encourage everyone to look into that over the summer. Recreation Committee, we talked about, Ecos wants to do two more gardens. This is an organization that does some gardens throughout the town here. They want to do some at Town Hall, so we discussed that. Our Facilities Use Manual, we have a resolution for our Facilities Use Manual in our packet tonight for resolution. This is for our town fields, our town pavilions, and facilities that in our town that get rented out to either clubs, individuals, or organizations. So we have a resolution for a Facilities Use Manual to make sure that we're taking care of the town's facilities. Senior Programs, that ends up being the last thing. We have a fantastic, very viable program down at our Senior Center and we've got computer programs. We've got Alzheimer's support down there. We even have information for tax prep. If people need help with tax prep, get ahold of the folks down at the Senior Center, they can tell you where to get that. They've also been working very hard to get grant money from CD, PHP, Co-op, and other organizations that help support our seniors programs. Doing a fantastic job down there. And our next meeting will be March 6th at 8:00 AM.
All right. Fantastic. We will move on to Water, Sewer, and Engineering.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I'm gonna keep my comments tonight very brief. There were just a couple of items from our February 6th meeting that I wanted to provide an update on. For the last several months, I've been reporting about the water and sewer rate study that the town is currently in the progress of with a company called RaphTelus. That is, as I've reported, well underway. RaphTelus has been requesting information from the town and of course, we've been submitting that to them as it's being requested. I do think it's important to note that as part of this study, RaphTelus requested data, five years' worth of billing information. And a simple report, which probably should have taken us a few minutes to run, took over a month to gather that data and submit it. And that's due in part to our antiquated billing software. So that's something we've been talking a lot about lately and this is a perfect example of why that updated billing software is needed. Like I said, a simple report that took, that should have taken a few hours or a few minutes to run, took us over a month. RaphTelus is also working with the town on analyzing the condition and age of our infrastructure and that's in an effort to determine where our priorities will be as we work to upgrade and repair our infrastructure. We do hope to have some community input with this process, of course. The Supervisor had previously mentioned the formation of an Oversight Committee. We did have several residents express interest in serving on that committee. We reached out to all of them and have yet to receive a response, but again, we do hope to have some public input in this process. The other item I wanted to provide an update on is our Organic Waste Program down at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, I've been reporting for the last several months that we conducted a pilot program for the acceptance of WAE, organic waste. I believe I reported last month that that process has been completed and we have gotten the final approval from DEC. And as such, we are now receiving 10 deliveries a week of WAE waste or organic waste, which is obviously great as we work to make our plant a net-zero facility. And of course, we continue to receive organic waste deliveries from septic companies that we've previously contracted with. As far as resolutions on the agenda tonight, we have a resolution to authorize the signing of a memorandum of understanding with CAPL for mercury testing. This is part of our mercury minimization plan. We also have the resolution to authorize the fourth-quarter corporate utility warrant. And lastly, a resolution to appoint a Deputy Superintendent of Water and Sewer. Our new Deputy Superintendent of Water and Sewer will be Dan Bulkey, who has previously worked for the town in the Water and Sewer Department. We are very lucky to have him come back. He left the town a few months ago to pursue another opportunity and here we are just a few months later, he's coming back. So I think that says a lot about the town, the type of place and the type of workforce that we have here. And Dan's knowledge and expertise is a huge asset down at the wastewater treatment plant, so we are lucky and proud to have him back. I believe that is everything I wanted to provide an update on this evening. Our next meeting will be next Thursday, March 6th at 4:30 PM in the Schaefer Room.
All right, great. Thank you so much. We'll move on to Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation.
Yes, thank you. We meet the first Friday of every month. There's a couple of resolutions on tonight coming out of the committee. One of them is a planned unit development project on Aqueduct Road that's gonna run in tandem with the Rivers Ledge, project that is almost completed. That is very important, the proximity to the Mohawk River, the Mohawk Bike Hike Trail, the Aqueduct Park, the Old Erie Canal, and all that development on the waterfront is in tandem with the comprehensive plan and what the development we've been trying to do and wanting to do on our waterfront, getting it used more fully. So that is one thing. Also coming out and was mentioned in the privilege of the floor is the creation of a Schaefer Homes Committee. And I think that's a wonderful idea. Mr. Darpino brought it to my attention, that it was something that he and the community wanted to do. And I actually grew up in a Paul Schaefer home in the city of Schenectady. They really are unique, they've got a lot of built-ins. He's done a lot of great work, a lot of work that I didn't know about and I'm sure therefore many people that know about right here in our community. So it would be great to have this committee formed and see what they come up with. I know it's gonna be some, some pretty, pretty good stuff. Also, there was a couple of comments, one of them regarding Route 7, and it's really been unfortunate what's happened on Route 7. That's one of the unfortunate things about government, but we have been trying to do what we could with Route 7, trying to get money for studies. We did get grant money, a lot of grant money for studies. That study hopefully is gonna come up with some type of solution to relieve the incredible traffic problem that is on that state road and that state corridor. It's just a process of municipalities working together. The town's gotta work initially with the county on a lot of roads and the state and getting a road with that volume of traffic on it, it's a, it's a big fill, but I'm confident we're gonna get it done. Unfortunately, it's taken some tragedies and unfortunate incidences, but hopefully there won't be any more and we can get that done. There was also an issue brought up about spending on public safety and officers' retirements and that was an issue that was really debated quite a bit. And of course, there was justification for it. Public safety is a big part of everybody's life. Officer morale is an important part of public safety. It's also important to have trust in your community and your elected officials when you're trying to hire additional officers and public safety officials. So all these things have really been thought out and I think it's easy for people to come up and talk about them. It's another mentioned up here. It is nice to get involved in these committees and turn that talk into action and that is the way that you do it on the Complete Streets Committee, on the zoning committee, the planning boards. We have a lot of committees that are still openings and I do want the Paul Schaefer Committee. I believe we still have one or two people that we're looking for. So please, get involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have a few things I wanted to mention in addition to the committee reports. I'm not gonna go in succession here, but one of the things that I had the privilege of being a part of was the ribbon cutting for the new food pantry at Capital Church. All of these things happened at the same time and it was just happenstance that the Capital Church was opening this food pantry, but I had inquired about, to the Regional Food Bank about programming in Niskiuna. Obviously, as most of parents of school-aged children are, was aware of NiskiNow and that's the nutrition on weekends that's available through the schools. However, I wasn't aware of any programs that we have for Niskiuna residents that address food insecurity for people outside of that. What's more, obviously, NiskiNow is focused on the student, not necessarily the wraparound care of the individuals that are taking care of the student. So I had a lot of questions about that. The Regional Food Bank was fantastic in providing a lot of information that we would have otherwise not been able to obtain. And what we found was that while I think of NiskiNow as providing a huge impact, we actually have a significant gap in between the number of families and individuals who have identified as being, having food insecurity either often or all of the time in their lives and the programming that we have available. I say this because coincidentally, a week and a half after I'd had this conversation with Regional Food Bank, Capital Church reached out to me. I was unfamiliar with their organization except to say that I would drive by the Martin Harding Mizati Building and see that their sign was up and I thought, oh, yeah, I was very curious about what was going on in there. They reached out and said, we're opening a food pantry. It happens to be double the size and square footage as the one that we had in our other location or their older location on Ly Road that's being taken over by another church. But what's interesting about their new location is that for anyone that's ever looked at the town line, it actually runs right straight through their building, but they are identifying their food pantry as Niskiuna-based. So what that means is they are very excited to work with us in trying to develop- in trying to develop programming where we can connect people with this food pantry and try to provide some care that would have otherwise not been available. So this has been a lot of small conversations that have come together. And I just, I really want to give kudos to Capital Church. If you have an opportunity to speak with Pastor Jason or Tracy, who is the lovely woman who runs the entire food pantry. It is a beautiful location. They have done an amazing job. I'm sure they are looking for volunteers if you are so inclined. And I'm really looking forward to providing you with an update as to how we can all work together to make sure that we're offering what we can and connecting the dots where we can. The other thing I wanted to mention, and this is also related to community programs, is I come with a unique perspective because I've been involved with the Niskiuna Day event, the parade, for a number of years. And this year, even though the town has always been involved in providing a lot of support by way of highway helping with road closures and trailers and so many other things, and obviously, the police presence for the day and helping with security and traffic control. We, we sort of have always had NCAP running all of the programming there. And I thought, well, why not, why not have a conversation with them to see if we might be able to help? So I'm very much looking forward to see how we can help them. We've just started those conversations. I think a lot of people think that the town of Niskiuna actually puts on Niskiuna Day. And so why not help? Because NCAP is an awesome organization, and they've been putting this on for years. It's actually as old as I am. I was in my mom Maria's belly, the first Niskiuna Day parade. So I feel some attachment to it, especially since I've been working on it for so long. So I mentioned that so that I can give you an update later on. I'm very excited for it. The other thing I want to mention is that this is the first month that we have moved to a new format for our newsletter. I had mentioned a few times, we're trying to come up with ways that we can connect and spread information in a way that hits more people. I assume today, tomorrow, Thursday, you'll be getting your Niskiuna in your mailbox. That should have a nice little miniature version of our newsletter that's in there. It also has a QR code so that you can access the full version of the newsletter. I will say this is our first month, so I'm hoping that you will reach out to me if there's feedback on how those links work and whether or not it's including the information that you think you need to know. So please, I welcome feedback because we want it to be a way to share information. So if it doesn't give you what you need, please let us know. We have our confidential secretary working on that. And a lot of the details that are in there are things that are available on the website, but it sort of condenses it in a way that's a little bit easier to digest. Some other things, we, I wanted to thank the Schenectady County. We are in the process, as Councilmember McPartlin mentioned, of getting all of our summer programming together. And they have been very forthcoming about helping us with all kinds of infrastructure that could assist us and not cost us any money. So I appreciate them connecting with me about that. And I'm sure community programs is going to be able to utilize that. Some other very small comments. I did want to mention that we have a police officer, Sergeant Party, who was recently deployed to help with the issues going on at some of the corrections facilities in the area. I say that because in hearing some feedback about his experiences there, I think you might be getting some feedback from people trying to help these officers in getting some supplies and some things that they may need while they're staying sometimes inside of the prisons to help. So I'm very much encouraging you, if you have the means and the wherewithal, to donate some things to help them out. I'm very much in support of that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have a new format for our finance and agenda meeting starting next month. It's not really that new and exciting. All we're doing is combining the finance and the agenda meeting into one meeting so that we're not stopping, sometimes we don't stop and we just carry right through because it takes the full 30 minutes for finance. Sometimes it's a very short meeting, and then we all sort of sit around and stare at each other until we start the next meeting. So we're not going to do that anymore. We're just going to combine it into one meeting. We're going to start at 6:30, and we're going to move right through. I say that because if you're used to the other style, the agenda meeting started at 7:00, come a little bit earlier so that you can be sure to get, to view all of the finance agenda and the agenda meeting as well. And with that, I think we will move on to our resolutions, minus two that we already did. We'll start with 2025-54, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations for the town senior center.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
As I spoke about in my committee report, these are some funds, grant funds, that our people down there at the senior center have worked diligently to get. And we want to thank CDP, HP, and the co-op for the funds.
Great.
I know during, I'm sorry. I, I know during, or from my time as Chair of the Community Programs Committee, how valuable these donations are, especially when it comes to the meal program and our exercise programs. These donations are appreciated. They go a very long way and keep some of the programs at the senior center running. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes. We're going to skip 55. We did that one earlier and move on to 2025-56, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution appointing deputy superintendent of water and sewer.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
As I reported during my committee report, this is to welcome back Dan Bulkey to the water and sewer department, and we're proud and lucky to have him back.
Yes, I'm happy that Dan's coming back. And also, a member of the public asked about this. This is a budgeted position that was vacant.
Yes, I echo that excitement because Dan's awesome, and we're so lucky that he's willing to come back. Dan was on the trajectory in his position to be deputy this year, had he not left about four months ago. So this is him fitting right back in, and I'm really excited for him to start. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes. We'll move to 2025-57, sponsored by Councilmember Delarada.
A resolution setting certain fees imposed by the town in Niskiuna related to short-term rentals.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This was a code we passed last month, and we're setting the fees to align with the code changes from last month. Any further? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
On to 2025-58, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin and Councilmember Delarada.
A resolution regarding an application for a planned unit development project on Aqueduct Road.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that this particular project is, one of the main individuals involved in this project is a long-term resident of the town in Niskiuna. He's also developed many other projects in the town with great success. And I want to thank Councilman Delarada for his help on this and our planning department, and Laura Roberts, our town planner.
And it's a good project. That's the important part.
Yes, it is.
All right. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes. We're on to 2025-59, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution enacting local law number two of 2025 to amend chapter 203 of the Code of the Town Niskiuna entitled Vehicle and Traffic.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? I assume it's aligned with the Anandaga. Is that what that was?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just enacting the prohibition of on-street parking for that portion of Anandaga Road, which we heard from several residents from tonight.
Yes, I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke about this. It's very important that we get the input from the town residents, the people that live in those neighborhoods. So thank you for coming out.
Great. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes. On to 2025-60, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution hiring an employee in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We are proud to welcome Zoe back as well. Zoe's been with us for several years, and she is definitely instrumental in the hiring of our seasonal employees at the pool and keeping the pool running on a day-to-day basis. So thank you and welcome back to her.
Yes, glad to have her back.
Absolutely. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. 2025-61, sponsored by Councilmember Delarada.
A resolution creating Schaefer's Home Committee and appointing members thereto.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Thank you all, Ken.
Yes, thank you. David, more work for you. Okay.
I'm actually really excited for this. I can't wait to see all the information that you gather. I think a lot of residents, especially people who have lived here for a long time, are going to be really excited to see what you, what you guys end up unearthing. I'm sure there'll be some, some really great information, so excited for that. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes. On to 2025-62, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into an agreement with Schenectady County for participation in the New York State Special Traffic Options Program for driving while intoxicated.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is a stop DWI grant, right?
Yep, yearly grant through Schenectady County that are very proactive in helping us with our stop DWI efforts.
Great. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-63, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution adopting changes in the town's facility use manual.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
So I spoke a little bit about this in my committee report. I want to thank everyone that was involved in this. Our town attorney, Elena Fingen, Lori Peretti, Jean Fodeuse, Madam Supervisor. A lot of hands went into this, and it's again to get some good policies and procedures down for our facility's use.
Yes, I echo that. We adopted a version of this last year. I think the material changes are that we're, instead of using day-long rentals, we're chopping it up into one-hour increments so that there's more opportunity for other organizations to rent the space if they need it throughout the day. And it just gives us a better idea about how long clubs, individuals, residents are using particular facilities so that we know when they might be available for other things. So I think this is relatively new as far as a piece, a document that governs these things. So we admit ourselves that it's, I think, probably over the next few years, we're going to be working out kinks, but we hopefully have something that's good right now. We've been able to share this with our, our sports teams and our clubs that use our fields often, and that have been very helpful in, in, you know, creating facilities that not only they want to use, but now lots of others do too. So I thank them for that, and I thank Jean Fode for all of the time that she spent on, on making sure that this came together for today. Any other discussion?
I just want to point out that, again, thank you to everybody who worked on this. This document probably takes more time and effort than anyone could imagine. So thank you to everybody who worked on it. Thank you, Jeanie. The reason this document originally came out a year, year and a half or so ago was to create equality and fairness among all of the clubs and our residents. So I just want to point out the intent behind it is to, again, create that equality and fairness among all of our sports organizations. So thank you to everybody who worked on it. Jeanie.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes. We'll move on to 2025-64, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications and inter-fund transfers.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? I think it was just a handful of bookkeeping changes, nothing really exciting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes. On to 2025-65, sponsored by Councilmember Delarada.
A resolution appointing a code enforcement officer in the town's building department.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? We didn't really talk about this because it's morphed. We had a gentleman that had been working in this role who has since left, and we are appointing a new person. So I apologize, I didn't bring that up in our discussion, but they'd be filling a...
Probably anticipating an increase with the short-term rental compliance and...
Yeah.
Yes.
We also have a lot of really big projects coming up, well, that are already in process. So I think that this is going to help us to make sure that if you're trying to put a deck on or you're trying to do something on a smaller scale in the building department, we have the capacity to get that done quicker if we have some, some people helping with code enforcement and building inspection as well.
And we've tried to raise the fees in a lot of different areas for building permits to try to cover the cost to do the inspections. And I don't really think that we're there yet, but the fees, even on the short-term rentals of 250 and 500, I think those are some of our more expensive ones that we have coming out of our department. But we'll have to see if hopefully they're enough. They might have to be increased.
Yeah. This is another example of some new things that we're going to hope that they work out the way that they are, and then we'll revisit if we need to. Any other discussion on this? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes. On to 2025-66, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a contract with the Bonadino Group for professional auditing services.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is our run-of-the-mill annual audit, financial audit, that produces our financial statements for the year, for this past year. We've been using a different vendor, I think, for the three years prior to that. This is a new vendor for us. And I plan on making the statements publicly available. I think that's been mentioned at least a couple of meetings ago. So if they are not up on the website, please let me know, and I will make sure that they are posted. And these will be posted as soon as they're completed. It usually doesn't happen until later in the year, and it would cover 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-67, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution appointing grounds worker in the Parks Department.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We've had openings for a very long time, so we're really excited that we're starting to fill some of these positions. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye. Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-68, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Flora Marine Propulsion LLC regarding mercury testing at Capitol.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? I believe this is something we pass every year as a part of Capitol being in Niskuna. It's a really big thing that we have to read and sign. Kind of boring, though. Any other discussion?
I mentioned it during my committee report, but again, it's just a recommendation under our mercury minimization plan.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes. 2025-69, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution awarding a contract for maintenance of the Niskuna Police Department vehicles for 2025.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. 2025-70, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of two vehicles for use in the Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? These are the grant-funded ones that Jess had mentioned. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.